Welcome to the No Picks After Dark Podcast. I'm your host, Aaron Dante. Today, we have a very, very fun show for you folks. This guy has been on the episode not once, not twice, but three times. The first three time winner on the show and it's an honor and pleasure to have him on the show. I mean, without further ado, Councilman Ryan Dorsey, how are you?
I'm good. If not hyped up, you know.
We gotta get people hyped, man. We gotta get people hyped for the show, man.
Hey, man, just as long as we don't let them down, right?
We can't let them down because you know, we did a little snippet like before, like before the season started. And people were like, when is that show going to come out with Councilman Dorsey?
I was like, oh yeah, you gonna have some excitement?
Yeah, we did. So I'm so excited to have him on the show. You know, again, he's in my, I mean, his, I'm in his district, not once or twice. If you're brand new to the show, I live on the other side of trucks, I call it. So I lived over in Hillon area and then I moved over to Waltherston. So again, I guess, I guess I wanted to hang around him further. I don't know.
Well, the, the, the real challenge here is, is having a conversation here for the recording as if we don't see each other like once a week anyway, right?
We do, we do, we do, you know, but that's a sign of a good councilman. I, you know, you always see him in the community, always helping out, always making sure, you know, helping, there's Ivy and doing.
Had my chainsaw out over the weekend. We had a big storm brought down a lot of trees, particularly over an original northwood blocking streets. We unfortunately had some fall on some houses and cars and I got out there in the morning with the chainsaw.
Nice, nice. So we brought you back because it was time to come back. As I said, we're going to do this either every six months or now it's going to be like a year almost.
It's been a little too long.
Well, the world's been a little slow. The last time you and I spoke, there was no COVID wasn't around.
Is that right? Was that long ago? No.
I'm telling you, you were on last year when I call it October sweepstakes and it was you.
No, that was like five months into COVID.
No.
It was.
You're right, you're right.
But we said, but we said we were going to do this like every three months and then we didn't.
You're right.
So that's on, that's on me.
You're right. You know, I get confused with the years now.
I mean, somebody suggested to me, right? We're in August of 2021. Somebody suggested to me a while ago, somebody should put forth the city council ordinance to officially recognize 2019 as last year.
I feel like it because I don't really remember 2020. I felt like I lost a year of my life.
Did it even happen?
I don't think so.
No, it did. And we, we had, we lost a half a million people in this country to COVID-19 in 2020. It was a really tragic and challenging year for a lot of people in a lot of different ways. So, you know, hopefully we're moving in the right direction with the mayor reinstating the mask mandate and things like that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's a hot topic. That's a hot topic. We'll get into a whole bunch of a lot of those things. So let's, let's talk about what things have you learned from the first term that you did? Cause I remember it was reelection was coming up and all that stuff. And you had, it wasn't election yet for the primary, but you kind of knew you were going to win your district. But what have you learned from the first time for your first couple of years? Now you got reelected. What'd you learn?
There's a lot of different aspects to like operating in the political world. And there are some like kind of, uh, not cliche, but like staple kind of phrases that people use. One of them is like, you know, no permanent friends or enemies, right? You work with people where you have to, things like that. And one of the things I guess I was thinking about just now is, is kind of there, there really aren't any one size fits all solutions or approaches to getting things done. Very different legislating atmosphere this term from last term. And in a lot of ways, you know, you find yourself being surprised at like, you know, who your allies are, who your adversaries are. And you find you, and that, and that can change on a case by case basis. So one of the things I think I learned going the, the, from my first term that I think I still carry with me is like throw a lot of irons in the fire and just see what comes out. And the more you try to do, I feel like the more you actually get done. I know you wanted to ask a little bit more about like some, you know, successes that I had last term, things I want to do this term. So, you know, I think that's a good way to talk about that stuff.
Let's go into it. I mean, again, what's success, I mean, success, what things can you say I campaigned on and I made it happen?
Oh, I mean, I'm wearing a Baltimore complete streets t-shirt.
Strategically, look at you. Okay. That was a good one.
I probably shouldn't wear this because people like over emphasize the extent to which like Ryan Dorsey cares about bike lanes and that's it. Like there's.
We've been there, done that previous episodes.
Yeah, that's not true at all. Right? Um, I do, I care about it. And I think there are a lot of reasons why more people should care about it. And the outcomes of investing in bike infrastructure are, are many and varied. And touch on all aspects of our lives. But, you know, I also put forth the ballot initiative to create the inspector general's office. We, I think I talked about this last time too, you know, just kind of the rundown. We, we passed anti discrimination law around source of income for housing. And that was part of a trend that happened that year where a couple of other Maryland counties passed it and the statewide version of the legislation was passed. And we passed an administrative procedures act, you know, like, look, you kind of have to be a little bit of a nerd to be like, you know, administrative law is like actually really important, but okay, administrative law is actually really important. Baltimore city does not, or did not have anything in place where it's like, if you wanted to know the rules and regulations around how you interact with government, how, you know, what you can expect of your government and when you're engaged in a process, that's something that you should be able to look up easily and find easily. And it should all be in some kind of orderly codified way. We don't have anything like that in Baltimore city where the only jurisdiction in Maryland, only major jurisdiction in Maryland without an administrative procedures act. And that was one of the things that we passed toward the end of the term last year. Also had some bills that were vetoed at the end of the term, things that I'm taking up again this term.
Okay. I love, I love getting audience a little background of everything that's going on for the year, you know, it's, it's been, now what about COVID? I know it's been challenging. You guys been in at home. There's a perception that in social media atmosphere that the council team, they don't do anything. Everybody just like, nothing really gets passed or, you know, there's that word that I don't really like using the word defund police, things of that nature. You know, just your thoughts on like, with the challenges that you guys have had going through this year as far as not being in person, doing legislations and stuff like that. It's a two-part question, I guess.
All right. I'll probably forget one part and ask you to repeat it.
No problem.
You know, in terms of the council, like operating, functioning, we're not really any different than we were last term, pre-COVID. We still meet with the same basic level of frequency in terms of like the full council meeting on average, twice a month throughout the year. We're a full-time legislature. We're basically never out of session except for like the few weeks between the very end and very beginning of a term when you've got a new mayor or city council president coming in or, you know, their newly elected, reelected terms are coming up. And, uh, and we continue to hold committee hearings on a pretty frequent basis, unlike the state, for example, that can mostly hold its committee hearings just during the three months legislative session at the beginning of the year. We have routine business that we have to handle like land use bills. And we also have to move forward on things that the state enabled us to do during its legislative session that we've got to like move through all of our processes subsequently, and hopefully before the next state legislative session comes up. So we continue to operate at a committee level year round and, and I sit on the committee, for example, that hears all the land use and zoning bills to allow for development and, you know, housing and business stuff to move forward in a routine fashion. So we do, you know, continue to do the work and, uh, you know, maybe, you know, the, the bigger picture legislative stuff is sometimes, it's, it's, it's often slower moving stuff. I've got bills that I haven't even had drafted that are top priorities for me this term. It takes time to get bills drafted and then, you know, kind of shop them around maybe before you introduce them, make sure you clear away some of the biggest obstacles so that you don't have to fight with people in, when, once a bill is in committee and things like that. You know, you want to know that a bill has some sort of a shot and some level of support before you even get it in. And some of these things are complex. So that takes a lot of kind of upfront and background work. What was the second part of the question?
Defund the police.
Defund the police is a phrase that is, you know, often about, generally about the understanding that all of the things that we expect police to do to bring about desired outcomes are things that are better achieved by other means. And so, you know, it's not as so much defund police as fund things that actually work and recognize that the money to actually fund those things is tied up in something that absolutely does not work. And that's policing. And, um, you know, we have a challenge here in the city particularly where we are under consent decree. We as a city opted to be under a consent decree and have a judge basically telling us what we can and cannot do with respect to policing specifically. And one of the challenges of dealing with Judge Bradar is that he's basically said, you cannot take money away from the police to put into alternative programs until you already have those alternative programs stood up and proving to yield the benefits that you say they're going to yield. There's no regard for the fact that the police definitely are not yielding those benefits while we are funding them. And there would be no loss in benefits because there are none to taking the money from the police upfront. But he has made plain, you can't take the money away from the police to fund these other things. You're going to have to come up with that money from somewhere else. So for example, if we wanted to increase funding to DOT to their safety division to hand off the responsibility for like responding to car crashes and doing those reports instead of police doing that stuff. Well, we might have to take that money from housing code enforcement. We might have to take that money from homeless services. We might have to take that money from solid waste management. We don't know exactly where that money would have to come from, any of a number of places, but definitely not the police department. Because if we did that, we would face Judge Bradar telling us, placing this city in contempt of court. And possibly appointing a receiver to be in charge of the police department, meaning he would take control of our police department away from us entirely. And those, that would be really bad. And so we're in a challenging situation, but I think that we have, you know, a lot of support for making changes and people working hard to figure out how to make these changes in a way that won't run us afoul of that. It's also the case that we have probably a better DOJ now under President Biden than we did under the previous administration. And so maybe the prevailing mindset there is going to change a little bit and things will become more permissive.
Now, I didn't have this on the questions, but I saw it this morning and just your name popped up in the article. So the Baltimore brew came out and I was appalled by this actually, that we have people who work, and I have neighbors, I mean, let me preface this, I have neighbors who are firefighters in Baltimore city. That I didn't know that they, there were some that people that worked for the fire department, lived in PA.
Three of the four deputy chiefs of the department.
Live in PA. They drive these cars back and home, back and forth. And there's more cars that go out every night. One guy lives in Eastern Shore and we pay as taxpayers, pay for that, for their, for, and I guess they were grandfathered in to what was going on. I mean,
There's kind of a lot going on there.
A lot going on that, but you commented on that. So I just wanted to.
Yeah, I didn't just comment on it. I mean, I've led this issue. I've led the awareness of this issue. I've been asking about the fire department's take home vehicle policy every year during the budget. And so, um, the third year that I asked about it, they knew it was coming. And so they developed a, they actually developed a policy. So it was like totally off the cuff ad hoc. The chief just like handing out take home vehicles to whoever he wanted. No policy whatsoever. And so coming into the third year that I, that they knew I was going to ask about it in the budget hearings, they quickly developed a policy by every account that I've heard their policy development. Approach was to basically survey the people who already had take home vehicles, find out who was the farthest away from the city. And then say your maximum allowed distance is just a little bit farther than that farthest away person. Uh, on, and then, and so then they, uh, and this is really, it's a totally wild like bastardization of what other places do. They talk about like measuring the distance that is traveled based on the farthest away firehouse within the jurisdiction. But it's just, that's not, the way that we're doing, that they're doing it is nothing like what other jurisdictions do. So they're basically measuring, uh, you know, up to 60 miles from the farthest out firehouse in Baltimore city. And so even though that that's not where this person has any responsibility at all. And, and saying, hey, you're within 60 miles. So it's okay. And there's no, there's, there's no justification for like, we're doing this because they are going to provide better service to the citizens of Baltimore city by getting somewhere an hour and a half after they get a call. Like that's, I mean, they're not, you're not talking about an emergency response by any stretch of the imagination. At that point, you're literally not a first responder. You are a last responder in such a circumstance. And in some of these cases, you've got a deputy chief who has their take home vehicle going back and forth to Pennsylvania. They've got, uh, basically what amounts to a personal assistant who also has a take home vehicle. And then when those two people get to the workplace from their homes in their citizen paid taxpayer paid vehicle, there's a third vehicle waiting there just for the assistant to drive the deputy chief around in. I can't make this make sense, man.
I'm speechless. Um, at this point, folks, we'll be right back after these messages. Let's talk a little bit about where we live. North West Chatham Plaza. Well, this is being really quick. North West Chatham Plaza. What's going on with that?
It's under redevelopment. Morgan is going to have a couple of their campus operations moved to the site, but mostly it's just going to be a glorified strip mall. I'm pretty disappointed with the overall development plan. I think it could have been something that wouldn't disappoint for the next two generations. If it had four or five housing stories on it to really increase density on the area, something much more sustainable, make the community even more resilient, add diversity to the community. But as it is, it's just like a little slice of Hunt Valley in our backyard here. Other things that are going on in the district.
Well, well, I did, you did say once upon, it was one of our episodes before, you talked about how you reached out to a fitness center to come here. And I was very disappointed because now I know what the place, I know the place you were talking about because I saw it off 95. And I'm disappointed it didn't have, we didn't get a fitness center. Like, and I know there's a plan of this, but we talk about health, you know, like why wouldn't you put a gym in this area? That would make sense, but I guess the powers that be don't believe that we need a gym over here.
Well, look, I think that this is, it dovetails with why there should have been a housing densification there. It's that higher density housing ensures a certain level of usership for all of the different types of businesses that could be there. But because we're not adding housing density there and it's basically a sea of parking along a strip mall. It's been challenging to attract the highest quality retailers. And then with that, not just retailers, but commercial tenants. But, and, and, and with that, you know, you struggle to get any tenants at all. You end up with less diversity in what you're able to get. So like, we end up with like five different national chain carryout, fast-ish food kind of places. And then you're just like, but we're getting a Chipotle. So everything's great, right?
Well, you know, I always, I was talking to friends the other day and like, why hasn't Morgan partnered with Baltimore city to get a hotel away from Morgan students, for families when they come in town? I always never understood that. You had to go to Towson to get them. That's the closest hotel.
I mean, we got, we got hotels in the city. There's plenty of hotels in the city, including one that the city for dubious reasons owns, right? So, um, it's, you got hotel issues in the city and, and the city, and there had been conversations before my time, there were conversations about potentially putting a hotel on that site. But honestly, the biggest issue isn't where are people going to stay for a night or two here and there? It's where are people going to live? We have a massive housing shortage in the city to say nothing of the incredible housing shortage that Morgan has for its students and it's worsening. Uh, I mean, they're housing students on the other side of town in a hotel at Cross Keys and have been for several years.
I did not know that until that article came out. I had no idea they were staying in Cross Keys. Wow. Wow. Okay. So the bridge, everybody talks about the Harford Road Bridge.
Harford Road Bridge is going to reopen this November and I'm really excited about what the design is going to hold and soar. It's going to have, it's going to go from being basically like a highway with two lanes of car travel in each direction and a like really unsafe feeling sidewalk on each side to having just one lane of travel for cars in each direction, plus a southbound bus lane to help prioritize transit along there, particularly for like morning rush hour, getting people to work. It's also going to have a southbound bike lane to help connect people from the north side of Herring Run Park down to Lake Montebello on that side of the street. There's also going to be a big wide, multi-directional, multi-use path on the other side of the street. And that's going to connect into a two-way cycle facility through the Mayfield neighborhood immediately south to help continue that connectivity from Lauraville on the north side and Arcadia on the north side of Herring Run Park, all the way down into the Coldstream Homestead, Montebello neighborhood and into Clifton Park. Uh, eventually to continue all the way down and on to, onto St. Lo Drive in the park there. And all of this is part of, you know, what I'm really happy to see as a continually, continually growing effort to create connectivity in this part of the city, connecting these kinds of communities. We're seeing some streetscaping now on Echo Dale Avenue to try to make it a little safer traveling east, west from the Harford Road corridor to, to Perring Parkway and vice versa. We're also going to see an extension of the Hamilton Business District, District Streetscape to the north up to where Hamilton Elementary Middle School is. And then next year, we will see a continuation of that same streetscape design from Northern Parkway up to the county line. So we're really expanding this along this corridor to create connectivity and a more cohesive business kind of community.
And that's working with Graham Corley, Corley Allen, will he be doing that?
No, this is a straight up DOT project, um, just like we did in the Hamilton Business District. Graham has done some really cool work right out, right outside of your studio here through the design for distancing program from BBC. Of course, I'd like to see more of that. We're also going to start to see, uh, we've got a pending policy change coming from the mayor's office. Shortly, something I've been working on with them to make it easier for communities to contribute to streetscapes. So that when we do basic stuff with paint and flex posts, like we see in the, um, through the quick build program in the city, that can, communities can start to contribute it by placing say like planters into those streetscapes. For, you know, flowers and plants and things like that, uh, without facing, uh, odd objections from the city. So we're going to see a policy that makes that, um, more approachable for communities.
That's nice, nice. Then I heard about a park that you guys are working on, North Harford Road Park. Is that what that?
Yeah. So we got a couple of meetings, uh, coming up next week. Um, I don't know when you're going to release the episode. It'll be in the past. So I'm saying next week. By the time you listen to this, you know, we had these couple of meetings a couple of weeks ago and they went wonderfully. People came out with all these great ideas about how, look, it's all about, you know, uh, how we're going to make a future investment in this site. Uh, North Harford Park, which is just basically a big empty field. That doesn't have any city programming on it, doesn't have consistent or robust, uh, private programming, you know, renting that, you know, reserving those fields for anything like that. Um, you can look at it and see how disinvested it is from the condition of the tennis courts that are there, completely unplayable. We're going to see those tennis courts actually converted into basketball courts, new asphalt surfacing, new basketball courts there, um, coming up this year. But then, uh, we're looking at what we're going to do for the future of that site, hopefully with a three or $4 million investment or more.
That sounds amazing about North Harford Park. I really enjoy hearing about that.
Yeah.
Gubertorio rides. What's going on? I'm saying it wrong, but you know, I mean, tell me a little bit about that. I, you mentioned it and I was kind of thrown off a little bit. What's this going on with?
So for a little while, I've been doing these bike rides around my district, like once a month, just open to the public. Anybody can come along. We spend about two hours on a Saturday morning riding about 10 miles, super casual. We have people come out. They've only, you know, some of them have never ridden a bike a mile before and they make it through and it's fine. Uh, and it's, it's great. Uh, and I plan a different route each time. Somebody said, and then I started, I had the mayor out to do one. I had delegate Regina Boyce do one with me. And, and then I was like, you know, she hit up all these people running for governor. And so I put it all on Twitter and these folks jumped at it. So just in the last week, I had bike rides. I did, I planned one route and took them all on the same route, but individually. And more or less one-on-one, uh, some of them brought staff. I had John Barron, John King, Wes Moore, Doug Gansler and Tom Perez. Each of them came out and did a ride with me. They all brought their own bike. And we had a good conversation. I had good conversations with all of them. I got a feel for where they're all at on different things, just, the scope of their perspective on different issues, things like that. Good conversations. Good time.
Okay. That's, that's a new one. I like that.
I feel like it's important to like, you know, um, to my constituents to show that I'm doing something to bring people at a bigger scale of government into their community and really emphasize the importance of this community, not just to Baltimore, but to the state.
I thought I did see Perez. I thought I saw that.
You might've seen, um, seen us drenched because it was pouring rain and, uh, it was fun to be undeterred by that.
So was it hard to get ahold of these guys? Like, I mean, I mean, I can't give.
I literally put up one tweet and my inbox, my DMs were just like, hey, we're interested like minutes, within minutes. Perez's people were trying to do it the next day. And I was like, I hadn't planned on this kind of response. I didn't even plan to make that tweet. I just did it off the cuff. And so, uh, you know, it took about a week and a half before we did the first ride, but we did five in six days.
You know, what been really cool? You should have recorded it. That'd been real dope. Like, you know, you know how like James Corgan does like his car thing? That'd been kind of cool. Riding a bike, you know, the camera guy riding in front of you guys. It'd been kind of cool to get the insights of like, really what's the real deal and like you're out of breath. They're going to talk, you know?
I mean, if you want that vibe, uh, Brandon Scott has had a documentary crew following him around for a while. And when he came out on the ride with me a couple of months ago, they were, um, riding like right in front of us the whole time filming out the back of a vehicle. Um, and, and so the mayor was just like, well, I'm going to ride out front the whole time. He was, you know, he set the pace for all of us. It was good.
That's funny. That is so funny. Uh, wow. What was your impressions of the conversation? Were they genuine? Were they all?
Yeah, everybody's genuine. I think that people have varying, uh, levels of awareness of what's going on in Baltimore city or even within the city, this part of the city. And, uh, some of them came, you know, briefed on like what my top issues are, and they brought them up. And some of them just, you know, it was just like, uh, came whatever off the cuff conversation. And I did a lot of kind of just talking about what we were seeing along the way. So it was very much a tour of this. I tried to hit all the different parts of the district. Um, I think we went through about like 11 different neighborhoods.
I love it. I love, I love learning new things. That's really cool. So what legislation are you working on now going forward?
I'm going to be introducing something related to towing. Yay. Super exciting subject.
I knew about that.
No, but towers are predators and we need to rein them in. And, uh, my effort to do that last term was not successful. It was vetoed by the outgoing mayor. I've got a, a new bill on that, um, that scaled down a little bit and it really focuses on the worst offenders and, um, it is really reflective of what was. And it is really reflective of what was highlighted in a report from US Perg not too long ago. And there was a New York Times article written about that report. So looking forward to that and having the support of Maryland Perg and Maryland Consumer Rights Coalition, who's also done really good work on towing stuff. But the really big thing for me this term is on addressing exclusionary zoning. Baltimore, like a lot of places, has a zoning code that is basically a constitutionally worded codification of the principles of redlining. Basically, we have a plan for how we keep our cities segregated and stratified. And we cling to it for dear life. For example, and it makes kind of arbitrary distinctions. So in a row home in Sandtown Winchester, you might have 2,500 square feet and be allowed to convert that into two or three apartments. But if you have a house here in Lauraville that's say 3,000 square feet, even larger, it can under no circumstances ever be anything more than one dwelling unit. And so we're restricting the ability, not only for us to create housing units during a housing crisis, but we're making it so that you cannot live in this neighborhood unless you have a credit score in order to be able to get a mortgage and money in the bank in order to make a down payment for to the purchasing of a home. We are severely limiting the opportunity for people to move to areas of opportunity like this where you have decent transit access, you've got a walkable corridor, you have multiple grocery stores. And instead, we're relegating people to communities that are food deserts and transit deserts and places where we have been left disinvested for generations. And so my biggest priority this term is in kind of deconstructing our zoning code in order to allow for bigger places like this to be able to be converted into more housing units so that people have an opportunity to move to opportunity.
Well, I'm going to counter to you on this. So what would you say to people who say, hey, I moved here just for that reason, to live in an area where I don't have to really worry about the difference zoning, rezoning? You know, I paid my taxes just like everybody else, but you want to have like, you know, I mean, I guess that's my thought, like when I, I'm just throwing devil's advocate at you. I moved here, I know people who moved to the county because they wanted certain areas, they want to be certain places. What do you tell your constituents who don't like to hear that? That's what they moved here for. That was the reason. And you want to have that land. You don't want an apartment complex in the backyard. You don't want that. You don't want, you want it what you want. That is your property devalued from that. I don't know. I'm just throwing things out there to you.
Yeah, so I think first at the basic level is like, I'm doing this because the system that we have is wrong. It's inherently rooted in redlining and we espouse to care about that as a part of our ugly history and something that needs to be reversed. And so I believe in principle that this is the right thing to do, even if we've clung to the wrong thing for a long time. And so people's indoctrination into the wrong system should not be an impediment for us to change that system. If we are talking about systemic change and structural change, this is a system that is literally a structure for how we remain segregated as a city and keep people from, keep us from affirmatively furthering fair housing the way that we should. Second of all, in a more kind of like crude or terse kind of way, it's like what you do with your property is your business. I'm not telling you that you have to convert your place into two apartments. I'm also not saying that the place next to you is going to turn into a high rise. What I'm saying is that many of the most like choice neighborhoods in the city have multifamily housing in them and it didn't bring down the neighborhood, right? And so creating modest increases to density aren't just about creating, creating opportunity for people to live in these, in in good neighborhoods. So so-called good neighborhoods, but also in bolstering the ability, as we talked about before with Northwood Plaza, is like creating a modest increase in housing density is good for the businesses that the, the ability to attract and sustain the kind of businesses I think that a lot of people want in their neighborhoods.
I love it. I love what you're saying. I love what you're talking about here. I definitely get it. So let's switch topics a little bit. You and I have spoken about a couple of things that's happened in your personal life.
Yep.
And I remember you and I had, I had a conversation because you were riding your bike around the neighborhood and just was very, just, it was really nice that we talked and just about personal issues and it was very nice you opened up.
Yeah, you know, oh, look, we were both like.
It was, it was a bad day for both of us. We were talking about some things that were going on.
We were both just like, hey, man, why have we been trying to get together and doing this recording for like months? And then not making it happen. We kept seeing each other and be like, oh, we gotta get someone on the books, you know, oh yeah, let's do that. And then it didn't happen.
Didn't happen.
And we were both just kind of like, man, you know what? I'm just like going through it.
We were, we were.
Burned out a little bit and just got a lot going on in my life. And we talked about, you know, what's going on in our respective lives. For me, at that moment, it was recovering from a pregnancy loss with my wife. And it's something that I started to open up to you about because we need to talk about pregnancy loss more. We need to talk about miscarriage more. And particularly, I think men need to talk about it, right? There's this, one of the prime reasons that it doesn't get talked about is because there's a longstanding stigma around, you know, you always hear like, well, don't, you know, you don't want to make any announcements about pregnancy till you're out of the first trimester. That's wholly rooted in like a sense of stigma around pregnancy loss that like, you know, I, you know, there, I think there are a lot of reasons for it, but but so we don't talk about it and then we kind of suffer quietly unless it happens to us. And then we start to talk to other people, you know, that we're really close to. And then we're like, oh, like this happens to a lot of people. This is like super normal. Why is it stigmatized? And, you know, research shows, is, research is not great on it. Partly because it's so stigmatized that people don't talk about it. And in some cases, don't even seek medical assistance with it. And also partly because when it happens really early, a lot of pregnancy loss occurs even before a person even knows they were pregnant. And so reports, statistics range from, you know, one in 10 to one in four. Somebody said to me the other day, somewhere between one in three and one in four pregnancies are lost. So it's a very frequent occurrence. And I opened up about it when a bill was being introduced just recently by Representative Ayana Presley and Senator Tammy Duckworth to create opportunity for people to grieve and take leave time from work when they're experiencing pregnancy loss. And, you know, I just want to encourage everybody to be very supportive of that bill at the federal level. I think that just the introduction of it is an important part of furthering the conversation about how we should normalize this and de-stigmatize this. But if you've been through this, you know, you know, it's challenging and 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 you also know that you can talk to people about it.
Yeah, I, when you told me, you know, it brought me back. I want to say I was six years old, five or six, and I remember talk, I remember it was my birthday. And my mom went into labor and it was a preemie, obviously. And it was tough on me as a child because I didn't know like what's going on, like I can't wait to have this baby sister. And I remember, you know, you know, passed away, the baby passed away, preemie. And I maybe till this day, I still may not have recovered from that mentally. And when you think about it, I was six years old, six, five or six years old at that time period. And I have not returned to the graveyard since then. So when you said that, it immediately flashed back to my childhood and how that kind of shaped your childhood. And then I think about, I have friends who have lost kids several times. And we don't talk about it. We don't talk about it at all. These are good guy friends. We just don't talk about it. And then when we do talk about it, it's like a weird, like awkward conversation, you know? You don't know what to say. And, you know, and I was proud, I was happy that you were able to talk to me about it because I was like, that's really dope, you know? And then you did it on Twitter and I was kind of like, okay, okay. That's how the new, that's how the generation does it now, I guess, you know, tweeted that. I don't, for me, it's such a personal thing, but I guess that's the way other people do things.
Well, and I, I think that, you know, I have a responsibility, I have a public visibility and platform that I think that, if I think that we should be talking about something at a much greater level frequency, that I have a responsibility to be a direct contributor in that and share my experience. And my wife had just also recently had an art show up where she talked about it in the statement piece on the exhibition right here in the community where we live. So, you know, it's both intimate but also public. And I think that that, that part of the issue and part of why I touched on that Twitter thread, my Twitter's at Elect Ryan Dorsey. Part of what I talked about in that is being understanding, accepting also of people not knowing the right thing to say. Like, for example, like I had a lot of people say to me like, you know, this pass, you guys are going to be great parents. Like, you don't know that. You don't know that we're actually going to conceive a child and carry it to term and that it's going to be healthy and live. Let's be honest about that. And maybe I'd be a terrible parent, I don't know, but like, you know, so that's maybe not what I want to hear. And and it's maybe not accurate. And, you know, I think about, so there are a variety of things that are maybe not the best thing to say. You know, I know I'm en grieving one of the most powerful and meaningful, just simple phrases that we can use to respond to people, you know, with the loss of a loved one or when somebody's going through any of a number of difficult things, you know, this must be difficult for you. And just open ourselves up to being able to listen and to have a conversation. This must be difficult for you. Not making any other conclusions about future outcomes or anything like that. I'm not a social worker and I don't study anything like that, but my sister's a social worker, her husband is, my mom's a public health nurse. And, you know, I don't know, that's maybe just one thing that has stuck with me over the years.
Well, I really appreciate you sharing it with the, with the people of Baltimore and just worldwide about what you were going through and what you were grieving through. So that, really appreciate that. And that, I think, I think you've healed and helped other people.
I hope so.
By, by doing that again, you know? So again, I mean, what is the, I know this is like, I don't want anybody going down in a sad moment on the episode, you know? But what is the last thing you want to leave with us today? Because I want to wrap this beautiful episode up in a bow.
You know, I, I think I kind of half expected you to ask me about like what records I've been listening to and things like that. You did that last time?
I did, but we're going to, you're going to, I think, I think that's a good way to end it though. It means a smooth, smooth transition.
Is a transition, how smooth can a transition really be? Come on now. Let me just do a plug here. If you haven't listened to it already.
Plug, go ahead.
No, it's not even for me. It's, yo, the new Black Midi record is so incredible. I've listened to this record like dozens of times now. These dudes rip. And it's such a great follow-up record to their, their first full-length release. These young British dudes just ripping. So if you haven't listened to it, go check out the Black Midi record. I don't know, man, we got good things going on here locally and around the, across the country, around the world. I just feel like the positive vibe that we can close on is, you know, it's like that the positive vibes are there if you're looking for them.
Hey, folks.
Do I sound like a hippie or what?
Nah, nah, we got some positive vibes up here in northeast Baltimore. We just had a huge article, it's already passed, but huge article about the amazing restaurants up here in Baltimore Sun that just came out. So we have, we have Soha Street Market. Shout out to them. Shout out to Sam with Soha Development, getting these things going. You know, we're in the studios right here. It wouldn't be, again, shout out to ZDAFM is doing this right now. Shout out for them. You know, my neighbors down in Strahan, they said, hey, let's make this happen. So again, it's a community effort and I really appreciate everybody listening. And again, this will be, this is going to be the October surprise again, part two. So again, thank you guys so much for listening. Ryan, where can we find you on Twitter? TikTok, Instagram, because we need, we need, we need a TikTok from you.
I'm not on TikTok.
We need you a TikTok.
Yeah, I guess. I mean, but I'm on Twitter, mostly just catch me on Twitter. I like, I post on Facebook like every three months now. I don't even mess around with it like that. But I'm on Twitter at Elect Ryan Dorsey. I post on Instagram pretty infrequently too, but that's also at Elect Ryan Dorsey.
And if people don't have Twitter, how can they get ahold of you? Email? What's the word? What's the best way to get into you?
I mean, if you're trying to schedule something or like talk about, use my city email address, ryan.dorsey@baltimorecity.gov.
All right, folks. Love, peace and happiness. We're out.